Morning everyone and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, May seventh of two thousand and twenty-four. With me today I have Don Schwinker, Lynn Flegel, myself Mike Stein, it's our county supervisors. Lisa Smith is our county auditor, Mearon is IT director, and Luann is our executive assistant. First on our agenda this morning, and Mary is here again from the newspaper. Uh, first on our agenda this morning is Todd Keating, our Jackson County engineer. Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, so, first on the agenda, you have something to do.
If you're going to make a decision on the, uh, Jason Effenheim residential entrance permit, you have to untable the motion. Because it was tabled last week.
Okay, and our question was, let me think, um, if they could come back in later and say.
So Jayden had talked to county attorney and basically as long as we're following our policy and ordinance, um, we don't have any liability. That was concerned if there's a fire, there's gotta be emergency services.
And they can't get in.
And they can't get in as long as we're following our established ordinance and policy that we have the protection under that battle. That's basically what's there for. And then we do have the assigned letter notarized, you know, stating that he realizes he's building on a level B, the county's responsibility. That's not gonna be upgraded, all that seems, so we have, we created this as another step in the process when somebody wanted to build on a, a level B or C road, so this is, makes them hopefully readily aware that what they're gonna get, so.
Okay, so you're okay with that?
Yeah.
So we need to relook at the requests. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Oh, sorry, second, yeah.
I have a motion and a second to untable the request for a Jason Heffernan, uh, level B, uh, entrance permit. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. So now you need approval of the permit, is that correct?
Yeah. So move.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the entrance permit as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Okay, the next one is a Class C forum entrance, uh, it's gonna be two minutes, so it needs all of, uh, time to discharge, so it's recommended.
A motion and second to approve the forum entrance permit for Steve Leach and Leach in Richmond Township, section seven, as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Uh, and then just a real quick update on the CPKC, um, we did get their application for an entrance permit. Uh, so this would be the entrance on the county room for this potential access road. We're gonna process this like a little entrance permit, um, now what, what they do with their old property, once they access our private, our, our public road, that's kind of their, their own responsibility, so we're processing this like, uh, we will be, like an entrance, like a regular entrance permit, so.
So basically you're saying, I mean, it's like this, da-da-da, the, the steepness, the grade, and all this comes into play for that application.
Yeah, we're gonna review their application for an entrance, just like they would, we were, they were gonna, just maybe.
Okay.
Um, I did email, uh, my contact there about the maintenance bond, what we could request, so I'm waiting to hear back on that. And, uh, I have not heard or received any of the information that said they're, you know, this regarding the, uh, I have to go check my junk email too, I should probably do that, but like, they were gonna send us the, uh, but I get emails from, from, uh, Daniel, so I don't know why I wouldn't get this other email. But they were gonna send us the corporate engineers permit that they said that they had, and also their agreement that they have that stipulates how long they can close the track for. And then if they are gonna close it beyond a certain period of time.
Is that an agreement, what?
I, it's like a, it's like a.
It's a national.
National, like, uh. It, it's, I think it's like with federal highway or the National Transportation System kind of thing, it's a.
Yeah, so it wasn't like just with us or.
Are you gonna be here a little bit later?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause I believe Shonda is scheduled later?
Yes.
Maybe he might have something to do about that.
He might. I could probably give Shonda some crap ones here.
Yeah.
He said it was mine, I was like.
No, I mean, if we ever see that, we're not, we're not really advancing anything here, and I, I don't know the benefit to county for that.
Yeah, so I, I mean, just go like this. But anyway, that'll be coming forward. We'll review this, like I said, I mean, that's, this is our policy, we're gonna review this entrance policy just like we do any other entrance permit, so.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Appreciate it, and the updates, that's T three oh eight, it's coming right along.
Yep, I mean, we're doing the road retrieval work too, obviously, not today, but, uh, that's been going on. We started the gap mastic work with forty. Uh, they've worked about, well, one and a half, two days. We got some bunch of before pictures, I had to get some after pictures. They're, they're the really bad thermal cracks, they have the big dips, they're filling that in with this back gap mastic product. Couple of pictures, you know, I had them lay a level across there, and then you take a picture before and you measure the run depth or depth of the crack, and then you do the same thing afterwards. There's a couple of more, there's still about a quarter inch or about three eights of an inch gap, and ask them about coming back and adding more material, because when they're all set and done, that's level across the, the cracks. They still got quite a bit of work left, so they're only, I don't think they got it. I don't know, they go really there a day and a half, so they gotta come back and finish it.
Okay, any questions for Todd?
Do you have any more about the upgrading that level C?
I haven't heard anything more about it, um, our policy's in place, so right now there's a process, if they, if they wanna pursue it, they have to follow the process. Oh, I had another question for you guys. For us to do it? I'll check with that, so that's two sixty-seven, right? Yeah.
That was seventy-five, twenty-five, I remember, right? Um, I think, I'm not so sure, but I think Jay was out there, I told him last week, one day.
I think he was gonna grab some cross-section surveys stuff too, because we were gonna try to figure out, I think part of the road was okay with this, and there was another part where it was like, it comes right down the road.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that was, that was more of the hill to the east where inches were. Cause he just wanted to go, well, he showed us on the map, I wanna say it was like a couple hundred feet past his driveway, or not his driveway, uh, there was some physical point that he wanted to go a certain distance.
When I went out there, I looked and I said, the farthest I have been was going, it's right when you push and start, that's right before you get there, move deep, and you go much farther, you're talking fifteen foot.
Back, back slopes.
Yeah, I mean, right off the road, I mean, it's like, there is no, so I said, as far as we've been going, you're like here.
Yeah, and that got to the entrance, right?
Yeah.
Um, when are you guys doing your fiscal, your twenty-four budget? Well, I, again, I submitted information, but what, what is dated here, what are you gonna prove it, my question?
Can we set up for the twenty-eight, five, wait?
Twenty-first of ten AM.
Okay, 'cause I, the reason I asked, I have to have, I have to get, get DOT budget first, so twenty-first of ten AM, but, okay, good, thank you.
Yeah. I was gonna say, I thought that.
I said, I'm pretty sure, yeah, we should, okay.
All right, thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
All right, are there any visitors or citizens either online? I don't see any present, uh, that would like to address the board? If not, um.
Good morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, board proceeding, right, by Honor Grace Smith, and authorize publication of the official newspapers. Allored.
Second, a motion and second to approve the minutes as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Need a motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. Second.
A motion and second to approve the claims for four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. Uh, any further discussion?
Twenty-seven thousand of that, and the terms payments and stuff, so.
Upcoming.
The charge is already paid, it's a correction from one fund to another, so just wrote a check. So, the payment's already made, we're just correcting, just funding.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Need a motion to accept, place on file and authorize that chair signature on the county recorder's reported fees collected for the, for the month of April, two thousand and twenty-four, in the amount of forty thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty cents. Allored.
Second, a motion and second to approve the order sheet collecting of four thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty cents, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same side, motion carried.
Need a motion to approve the renewable special Class C retail alcohol license without our service to the Zewinville Recreation Association at twenty-eight, four sixty-one, one hundred and ninety-fourth Avenue, Zewinville. Effective May third, two thousand and twenty-four through May second, two thousand and twenty-five. Second.
A motion and second to approve Zewinville Recreation Alcohol Permit as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
My understanding that our fifty-year lease did not pass, um.
Together we built to get to underwriting to get their required insurance, um, underwriting kicked it back because there were some discrepancies between our insurance and what they were asking, so they asked for a couple of corrections, um, got it done, I talked about it, and, uh, it was just, well, we were supposed to cover what they were supposed to cover, it was corrections, county attorney said we don't need to vote on it, probably, because I need to, just correcting a couple of responsible for things. It had said the pass is underwriting, and it's a go. Corrections.
One second.
So we are approving the lease together, we know.
Where we're sending the first one and.
As presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
So that I have for the board today.
Uh, Luann, I believe we've got time to take you to, if you're available.
Yep. It won't take long.
Good morning.
Good morning. All right, calendar for this week, uh, this evening is seven o'clock is the Board of Health meeting for NIN. Tomorrow on May eighth at nine AM, it's also NIN's turn on Gaming Just Talk program. At three o'clock tomorrow is CIA, it's Council Special Meeting, improvised Zoom for Mike. And at four o'clock tomorrow afternoon, it's Michigan Affairs Commission, it's conference from Dons, Dons here that I've done, has been attending those. Thursday, May ninth at noon is the Jackson County Area Tourism Reservation Meeting by Zoom for anyone that wanna go to that.
Oh, did I see that was canceled or no?
No, it is.
Okay.
They, they, it was meant to be the annual meeting, but they couldn't get their secret, so this is just a regular meeting, and the annual meeting.
Okay.
Monday, May thirteenth at seven thirty AM is the Early Chaplain Iowa Executive Training Meeting, in good, or by Zoom for NIN. Um, also you can add at one o'clock on Monday, May thirteenth, um, is Mississippi Valley Workforce Full Board Meeting, um, to listen to or by Zoom for Donna, I think, said he was going by Zoom to that. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, May fourteenth at nine AM, and then afternoon at four PM is a Mahoocana River Watership Management Authority Executive Training Meeting by Zoom for Donna. Only other bit of business I have for you is we need to.
I would just like to, maybe, on the calendar, before we jump off the calendar, and so remind, uh, our county, uh, voters that they're in debate Wednesday evening at five thirty, correct? At. Or Sheriff County.
Okay, um. Other bit of business, if you need to talk about our June fourth meeting, um, RTA was supposed to be the next day, but they had to reschedule back to June fourth, and right on top would, we barely have our meeting, so, um, for motion to reschedule that meeting possibly to a suggestion eleven o'clock on Monday, June third.
So, yeah, I mean, there's some individuals flying in for the RTA board meeting, so they're meeting on Monday with another group in, uh, the RTA board on Tuesday. So that's a request for theirs, or not a request, they're having that meeting, like, so certainly probably should accommodate if we can do, um, yeah, there's several of us leaving toward the end of the week, so Monday, maybe, works the best, so how's that work for election week for you?
Doesn't matter, just whatever, whoever you schedule, that'll be here.
Well, for. So, uh, you, you were hoping for a little later, and then.
Well, I just, I don't know how long we can go, but, you know, it's an effort.
Um, okay, work okay with everybody else, working through lunch if we have, I don't know. We'll try to accommodate everybody's wishes here, and, uh, let's tentatively set it for eleven AM on third. For that, or that's just, yeah?
I'll make a motion to the bar, June fourth meeting to Monday, June third, starting at eleven AM.
One second. Have a motion and second to change the June fourth meeting to June third at eleven AM, start time, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
So ahead.
Thank you. Okay, so we are down to Andrew Long, our Jackson County Jail Administrator, good morning, Andrew.
Awesome. What would have come to be some confirmation?
Yeah, confirmation to talk about.
Good morning.
Good morning, good.
So this week is National Correctional Officer. Um, just have a week to honor what our correctional officers do. So I guess I can read this proclamation if one of you want, I don't know, so.
So right ahead.
All right. So whereas National Correctional Officer employees, an opportunity to honor, praise, and recognize all the men and women serving corrections. And whereas on the first Saturday in, in May nineteen-four, President Ronald Reagan issued a proclamation calling upon all county pensioned corrections professionals, this proclamation created a commemoration of the work done by correctional officers in honor of many fellow who have long overdue. Whereas in his May fifth, nineteen-four proclamation, Ronald Reagan stated, professionalism, dedication, and courage exhibited by these officers throughout performance in demanding and often conflicting roles deserves our, our utmost respect. The important work of correctional officers often is not received recognition from the public and deserves. It is appropriate that we honor the contributions and accomplishments, men and women, who are a vital component of the field of corrections. And whereas corrections officers play a vital role in Jackson County law enforcement, and they are dedicated to safeguarding residents of Jackson County and ensuring the public safety. All the men and women who serve put their lives on the line and perform very difficult tasks that can be deemed as frustrating. And whereas correctional officers strive to maintain safe working environment inside the facility, often facing significant challenges and dangers. And our committee recognizes the important work and sacrifice that correctional officers make each day in protecting Jackson County. And whereas Jackson County correctional officers have shown a great deal of dedication, training, development, may Jackson correctional officers be advanced in training and drug certification in areas such as classroom instruction, taser, open-seated pepper ball, nursing CPR, acetaminophen, de-escalation, crisis intervention, positive negotiation, drug-based recognition, and law enforcement. Uh, so I'm not sure if I can read the last part or if I can.
Uh, doesn't matter to me. Now and therefore, I, Mike Stein, as Chair of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors, hereby proclaim May fifth through the eleventh of two thousand and twenty-four to be National Correctional Officers and Employees Week. In Jackson County, and encourage all citizens to join in honoring and recognizing our detention officers and employees. Jackson County encourages you to initiate, support, and embrace new ways of honoring its critical public servants as they perform their duties every day in challenging situations. We dedicate these seven days annually to recognize the great public servants, but we should not hesitate to make every day an opportunity to honor, praise, and cherish all the brave women and men in corrections. Same sign, and again. We appreciate all the service that you guys do. Thank you very much.
Kind of the hidden hero of law enforcement.
Yeah. Um, you're kind of behind the scenes, yeah, that is true, so nobody sees what happens and what goes on in the actual situation that you could be taking into.
We have had a, a busy year, we've had some suicide attempts, we had a sneak attempt where one tried to get over the fencing. Had some other kind of crazy incidents come up, so fortunately they handled them all very well before it turned into a flipping tragedy. Um, I can't say they're good about all of our staff, they're doing very well. Uh, you know, prior, our average on our, or just general log checks of inmates, uh, was about eleven thousand here, and so far in twenty-four they're up to twenty thousand, so, I mean, you're, they're really doing a lot of work and doing a very good job, so very proud of all of them.
We, we certainly appreciate their service and, uh, wish them the very best, and, uh, if they have any, um, recommendations or requests, then recommend for us, we'll see what you can do. Hopefully a new facility will accommodate.
Hopefully the, some of those we should be taking care of in the facility.
I sure hope so, yeah, it will, I think you'll see more incidents, but it'll be more manageable, you know, by volume, you're gonna have more medical, you're gonna have more uh, mental health, of course, and the problem for us, you'll have more issues by volume, but it'll be much more manageable based on the items. Um, and then the other thing I was just gonna talk to you guys about is, um, stuff more than the facility. So I've been working on a spreadsheet of things that we're gonna need to purchase, um. I'm not sure if you guys are looking for every little thing that comes to my mind, like a stapler, or if that's something you're looking for us to purchase, if it's, um, something you want me to purchase, the stapler, if guys there is, show it to you, or we want that to.
Um, I would say, I mean, certainly we need operating supplies, I mean, and we have some, of course, I would assume that we're taking with.
Everything over there doesn't.
Absolutely. We had that situation where people walked out with things sitting here, but, um, no, I mean, I, again, we will accommodate to whatever you think, the best, and obviously, if you come with a list, or you have the list, it's what you think. I don't have a problem with your buying. Supplies.
Okay. Yeah, and as far as like inmate uniforms, that kind of a thing, um, the gal's gonna give me a quote, you can order them online, but she said she could, she'd do a lot better if she quotes it for you, so.
Okay, so I was thinking about that, I'd like to jump into where everyone come, so were they figuring at any of the startup costs with, with the contractor, or with the construction guy, or is that something separate, or is that in the budget, or what do we do with that?
I believe, and I could be mistaken, I believe we had budgeted some for the upstart, but then it was moved into the board's budget, does that sound?
That was last year prior, I'm not sure about the twenty twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five. I know we had some in twenty-three, twenty-four, startup costs, which is, gonna be here gone very soon.
Right, so, yeah, I mean, if we can get, um, then ordering that stuff all.
Yeah, no, we certainly should look into that, that we got that taken care of, and I, I don't know, we should maybe touch base with John also, and I know he probably has some startup, um, fund allocated, I would hope.
Right, I think something, yeah, yeah, I'll check with him.
Have you talked to John lately, uh, Brent at all, as far as startup, uh, um, equipment that's needed, or, yeah, can we talk about the uniforms, of course, and mattresses, I think we have ordered, is that correct?
Mattresses were included in the bid.
Okay.
Um, some of those we actually had to steal for the current jail, that was, uh, jail inspector told the comment was mattresses can take your place, so.
Yeah, I remember, not that they can't be taken with.
Oh, absolutely.
So, uh, yeah, I, I think I would touch base a little bit, see where, where he had, or would he get some figured in for the initial startup, I would guess, and there's.
I just.
It was supposed to be turnkey, that's what I was.
I just, for, ordering supplies, the thing, I just, not that I wouldn't be, like, man, I just kind of like know what you're thinking.
Sure.
Again, you know, we don't, you need to correlate that with what you think you need to get it going, with what's over, piece by player, so what you gotta go, you know, kind of mention downs, we can get it over.
Right.
All is to get it in there as soon as possible, when that happens, next fiscal year, next calendar year, I don't know, it just seems like, um, people thinking, maybe, last time I talked, you said, don't leave anybody in the plug, we can be doing some training kind of situations, just learn how to control all that stuff, but, I'm just, what, I don't, to say, just go ahead and order it, I can't, I don't know if I can say that, not know if it's on that list, and so.
I mean, cause from my understanding, there's some weird stuff over at piece by players, like, that you might not think about, like, trash cans.
Right, yes, at some point.
Metal racks and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, at some point we should try to get over there, and, and as a group, I guess, and see what is good, what's not.
Right, well, I felt there's so much getting over there and looking, I think, you need to start taking it out of there.
Right.
Um, I did talk to one of our previous employees, if he's willing to come, and he was one that helped move it, and they're marked, he said, they're tagged, um, like, this piece goes with this, A and B, and C and T, and nothing else, so.
We've been working with John to give it space so we can start.
Yeah, we can get in the building or wherever, yeah, I don't.
And some of that stuff, I think, that's good to go into the administration area already, so, I mean, we need to start working on that so we can get things situated, right, absolutely.
Uh, so I guess with that being said, why don't you coordinate with our maintenance guys too, once, and see what they're thinking, and.
Okay, yeah, and like I said, I've got, I've got an Excel spreadsheet, um, with quite a lot of stuff on it, trying to sort through what, what we don't. Um, in terms of the uniforms, I'm waiting on, uh, a response back from that gal, um, to quote it.
Are we still using what we got?
Uh, for, for the most part, yes, um, a lot of what we have is not great, it'll get us through, you know, if we don't have enough, um, but it's not great.
You'd say.
Correct, you have the uniforms, yeah, um, so, yeah, we'll reuse what we have, um, you know, that's usable, a lot of the stuff we have, uh, you know, like our chairs, for example, that we have in jail are actually old ones that are used in offices here that were rejected, so we took them. Like our printers from the old hospitals, I mean, a lot of what we have is hidden down in old, um, but if it's usable, we can tend to use it, so that, um. One thing, as far as the, it'd be uniforms, learned from another county, talking with them, as we have this message, what they said they recommended was they have solid inmate uniforms on the bottom and striped on the top, that way, very easily identify if someone's not where they're supposed to be. So obviously, dorm style ones, we wanna, the biggest concern, we're gonna have their stuff, um, inmates are gonna try to steal from other inmates, they happen all the time. Um, so that kind of helps eliminate that, if you have someone that's wearing a striped jumpsuit or striped uniform, and they're in the dorm area for solids, that's a problem. If you have a problem inmate that we don't want upstairs because they're an issue, and they're in solids, and they're upstairs, we know we have a problem. So, uh, that's what, what we're counting, what, that's a very easy method for managing that, especially if you take in from other counties, by not necessarily know all the inmates like we. Easy method for managing that, especially if you take in from other counties by not necessarily know all the inmates like we do now. So it makes it very easy to identify who should be.
Makes sense.
Yeah, yeah. So I think that's kind of what we're looking at in terms of that. But uh, like I said, I'm gonna. Go back from the elders and I'll present that to you guys. There. Would you want that in the form of a work session or would you want that? What would you guys prefer?
Oh, I think either or. I think a work session is fine.
Okay.
Well, if you think uh, you have the list narrowed down, I mean, again, you can email to us prior to our meetings. Then we can look it over and if we have questions, we can argue with possible action if you want to be on, on the agenda. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think we need to start thinking forward here. I mean, we're hopefully.
Since I was in there, but it's really uh, coming along. Yeah, old John told me kitchen stuff came in. Uh, he says it's installed. He had to. Doesn't want to, so we're getting there. We're finally out. Yeah, absolutely.
And when we get it more narrowed down with John. Possible finishing. Public, uh, open house.
Oh, absolutely.
Obviously, the house might be a little better than seeing that you ever.
You know, I could see some of our clients wanting to be one of the first ones in jail, trying to get.
But uh, no, there's a lot of people interested in. Look at some point.
Very fortunate to have it and I'm so glad to have that extension up top and it's uh, it has a silver off the public. So.
All right. Yeah, obviously taxpayer dollars. They want to see what they're paying for. So we'll, we'll get it arranged. All right.
Thank you so much. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we're joined by Becky Chapin, our Director of Human Resources. Good morning, Becky.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, thanks for being today. So we have our health insurance renewal between July first of every year. And we received our renewal at a rate of a four point nine percent increase, which is actually below trend. Um, we are part of Iowa Community Trust. Um, and they provide Walmart plan through that trust. The trust has multiple plan levels. Our group is enrolled in option number eleven, uh, which refers to the fully funded plan that we purchased through Walmart. I don't see a change in the plan level for July first. So I would recommend a motion to approve the Walmart renewal rates through the Iowa Community Trust, option eleven. And authorize myself, Becky Chapin, to sign the renewal documents and all compliance paperwork.
Make that motion.
I have a motion and a second to renew. Um, health insurance renewal uh, according to option eleven and presented. All the favorites say aye. Aye and close, same sign.
And then dental rights will remain the same. And we are in the second year of our art vision rings every two years. So that will all remain the same this year. We'll um, get rid of that next year. Nihart Service Contract. We are required to have an annual actuarial evaluation completed under GAS seventy five. So it's just a governmental accounting standard. It's required of all state and local governments where they um, give us a report. Um, and financial disclosures about other post employment benefits. Um, we have to actuarial review of that service. We have Nihart since it became a requirement. We did have a two-year agreement with them most recently that expired after fiscal year twenty three. They provided um, another two-year agreement at an amount of sixty seven hundred dollars, which is about a three hundred dollar increase from the prior two years. Um, each year, every other year, we have to have an interim report. And then every other year, we have to have a report. So one year's more expensive, the second year's lesser expensive. Um, but the two-year agreement for them is sixty seven hundred dollars. We've worked with them. They're great to work with. They're very efficient. They're very responsive. They give us the information. I have to the state auditor's office, everybody's. So they're pretty, they're great to work with. Um, so I would just recommend for a motion to approve the two-year agreement with Nihart. To provide the actuarial evaluations for fiscal year twenty four and twenty five as required under GAS seventy five in the amount of six thousand seven hundred dollars. And authorize the chair to sign. Second.
Motion second to approve the Nihart service agreement as presented. Any further discussion? Another question is, Becky, I know that you're happy with them and they provide a great service.
Yeah.
Do we look for other options just to keep ourselves? Aggressive.
Um, so we've had to do this, I think, this is the third contract, so probably six years, I haven't. Um, there has been chatter among counties like who, for companies that come through and ninety percent of them say, oh, the state recommended Nihart with them. So I have not yet. Um, maybe next year. Um, or in two years when this contract expires, that'll change. Maybe something to consider.
Just so we do our due diligence, you know, like getting everybody doing them. That's a good thing. I will work good. Everything's fine. But I. It's not a large number and the three hundred number is not a large number either.
Yeah, it's actually, there's, for the information, I think, give us, it's a very extensive report. And I'll be honest, I don't understand at all the state auditor. But to make, to make counting entry, um, they require a lot of information from us and they require backend work. So I'm sure it's their accomplished process they have to go through. I actually don't know what other companies provide the service. Um, like it's in the state or. Seven chains again, two years ago. Research that.
Okay, thank you. Although, whoever say aye. Aye opposed. Motion carried.
Just one please. And then the Coordinator of Disability Services, Applications Carrier closes this Friday. Uh, if you want to look at calendars, actually. Slimes, I don't know for schedule, but maybe afterwards if we can block out.
Okay.
Okay.
What did you say about a meeting?
If you guys want to look at schedules after your meeting today to see if there's time next week or the week after, but everybody's available, that we can block out, which is planned, which is scheduled. So the application very close this Friday.
Okay, so, yeah, oh, yeah, whatever works out for that. Maybe. Can we do a doodle bowl or something? Maybe? I don't know. That work or throw some times out, turn the bell.
Sure.
Um, we'll have to accommodate, I suppose, the applicants. So what if they're working?
Yeah, I'm sure maybe someday.
Let's see what we got and see where we're at. We're talking to people.
I didn't know if we wanted to get together.
All right. But you have a process yourself of going through applicants and maybe choosing the top five.
Um, last time I did the qualifications, the spreadsheet, check off the box, the, that was one in your packet. It's at the job description and there are the requirements for the position.
Qualifications. Eliminate.
And we can all, if you want to. They serve available next Tuesday after the board meeting. Sessions for you and.
Yeah, I, I. Yeah, I mean, I guess, like I said, two, top five, yeah, five.
There's currently seven.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's good.
Okay.
All right, appreciated. Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, Bjorn, our Jackson County IP Director. On deck.
So this morning I just have the lease agreement with BLB, uh, communication of Jackson County. For Viber, two private courthouse to. Um, that's actually our agreement. And estimate, I should say, started, uh, started in twenty twenty two. So.
I was gonna say.
We've been at this for quite a while. Yeah, I appreciate Kyle and, and like working with us to keep, push them off. Two years now, basically, as our project has been, but anyway, so unfortunately, at that time, they. Two hundred dollars a month for five years. Um, it's been a couple of years. Kyle called and asked if it could be a problem to create that to two hundred and forty. I felt that was fair as. Changed in the last few years and. So what, what this would be, would be two hundred and forty dollars a month. For five years. What's that five years? Um, is up, go another five years, they raised it five percent of that two hundred and forty bucks. Basically, it keeps the um, courthouse connected with sheriff's office. Don't have to worry about maintenance of the fiber line. We don't have to worry about locations. If there's a construction project, we don't have to worry if somebody hits it. Find somebody to fix it, take care of all that. So. My opinion is um, we've done not to do this. Um. I have that for effective next Wednesday, fifteenth. We'll go live. Um, I've had contractors contact me. Electronics. Now we're at that point next week to do that. So I'd like to. Um, have this approved and the board, uh, board chair sign.
Oh, I appreciate them guys too hanging on and, and I mean, they had that agreement and they laid the line for us that time and it was gonna cost us more. Intervent to do it for underground, uh, do that. So that makes complete sense. What I'm looking at here is if they're gonna do a five year and two, whatever the number is, it was two hundred. Uh, honestly, I would agree to a five percent increase. Per year, which was two years. Five percent, five percent.
It's five, five percent after the five years. So we're doing two hundred and forty bucks for five, a month for five years.
I hear you. But they went from two hundred to two forty, which is twenty percent.
Right.
So that's where I'm coming from. If they're willing to raise it five percent after five. Now they're raising that are proposing a twenty percent increase after only two.
Could they have also been charged for the past two years?
Because.
So. Well, and there's that.
You're saving a lot of, you're saving money that way.
It's a, it's a dark fiber, so only we have connection to it. All the, it needs all the bandwidth. So the, yeah, so fiber connecting the two with the bandwidth is gonna be their, their answer. It's just the other provider, but yeah.
So we also have dedicated, dedicated.
Dedicated line, nobody else touches it. That's what we had to have actually for uh, CJIS or. The federal.
So is this an ask of his or are we voting on that proposal? Still negotiating.
This is just to get signed. It read it verbally. Back then, the only change is that, that price.
Honestly, I don't want to quote twenty bucks. Makes sense to.
Hundred and something here. That's somebody that had to be able to. Compared to what I do versus what they do.
Yeah, I agree. I just, I understand that, you know, I mean, it's a minimal number, but it's still a twenty percent increase. But we agreed on, so you know, I, I would gladly do a ten percent, say two twenty, but. But is that something you go back or do you say your name?
Also say two thousand four hundred dollars they've been charging you since they laid it in.
If we're not even service, I don't know what we're gonna charge for not even something. I mean, I don't know what.
Right, you pay for com or whatever.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agreement for the internet service as presented. Although that the cost presented, although the favor say aye. Aye opposed. Motion carried.
Live internet access.
Good.
So their company can hook into their system just as.
Um, is that something that we can start testing? Um, from either connection from. Here to there?
Uh, connection. Yeah, yeah, that's the only way to get internet. If you're mounting up of our internet connection.
Okay, thanks Bjorn. Uh, at the top, we'll take a recess. Um, excuse me, we will reconvene at this time and we are joined by Danra Revada of the ECIA interim director. Good morning, Danra.
Thank you, Superintendent. This was a self-advantage.
Good sir.
I want to formally introduce myself. I am the uh, interim director for ECIA. As part of my job, it's our executive director. Come and present to the supervisors once in a year on what the activities are done within the county. And also seek their input and see what else needs to be done in the county that we need to assess in our programs and uh. Uh, for the next fiscal year. So today I wanted to just give a brief idea. I'm in step with the presentation and it's a handout. The presentation is to give an idea of what ECIA is. Which you know, some people know because you already had your one hundred percent on this. So I'm not going to take your time on that. But we hand out the overall description of projects that have been done in the county for twenty three and twenty four. Uh, why we're having two years, a couple of these projects roll out in a couple of years. So uh, we have multiple years on this. Uh, but we've got the activities that are done with the county. So for example, HUD, uh, in place, we have eleven properties done in Jackson County. Then HUD let painting, we had ten properties done uh, in the county and then uh. Healthy home, yes, it's also started assisted. Uh, the let paint grant, some properties are done. So this is from CDP. Then we have CDBG water grant for half a million for Lamont. Then we have RLF uh, uh, grant for something seven thousand for City of Mokota. Uh, then we had some uh, minor things like uh, we had hazard mitigation plan that's going on in Jackson County. Uh, the plan is due twenty twenty five Jan, so we are working on it right now. Uh, this plan. We be working out, we always have fifty percent contribution from the transportation department. So the county, uh, in this case, the emergency management department got uh, the plan for fifty percent of it. Uh, then we wrote some uh, grants for the county, uh, for six hundred and fifty thousand free communities. Then we are also having the annual clerks meeting. But we are also trying to see, to inform a clerk's group in Jackson County because we are very successful with the clerk's groups in, in the red counties. There, the clerks meet on quarterly basis and then when there's a new clerk, they always have a guidance from a senior clerk. Within the community saying that this is the timeline, this is what, the League of Cities does this a lot. But when you're, you don't even know who to contact at League of Cities, you know? So most of the time they contact us, we provide guidance. Uh, but sometimes uh, it's just. They talk about uh, pretty much about everything from uh, legal issues to uh, like cash issue. To like uh, property advancements and so on and so forth. So uh, being a clerk obviously is a hard job because you should do everything and anything. Multiple hats. So this group has helped a lot. In Jackson County, we are trying to form one in the past. We tried to do one. But we are not successful, but that's one thing we're pushing this year. Uh, we are doing similar in Jackson. As I Clinton and uh, city counties too. So the idea is once the clerks are very active, that will do us a lot of important, that will help us to start working on projects and programs for them. Uh, the good example is the RCTP program where the clerks came together and said, this is what we wanted to make, supported it. We had a very robust program. So that's what we want to mimic in other programs too. So.
I think there's been some turnover in Jackson County as far as clerks too. So I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, and that's one problem we have. If you don't have an active clerk, you don't know which clerk is coming and who you knew. And they don't know who to contact. And that's one problem we are walking into. So.
And I think that meeting we had down at the fairgrounds, we had one or two of the new parks.
Right.
That had a lot of questions. So this would be a very good program, I think, for Jackson County.
And we are also uh focused on. Is staff to. Occasionally with city clerks, just go to their offices, say hi to them and see if there's issues being addressed. So the debtless, we know there's a turnover, we know that there's a clerk and so on and so forth. So I don't know, we tend to the clerk's call. I that's like, that's not the right thing to do because clerks doesn't have time and they don't know who to call most of the time. So that's one thing we are working on. Uh, then uh. Uh, city of Baldwin, my man, uh these two had city courts updated, then we wrote catalyst grant for persons if you like. Then uh coming to housing, we had essentially housing hundred fifty four families assisted. Uh, then the mainstream, we have five families assisted and then housing trust fund, uh we had eight hundred twenty one thousand three hundred seventy eight. Uh, spent from twenty twenty five. Uh, the next ones are more like a transportation of planning. We have a Jackson County comprehensive plan. Uh, Jackson County has a mitigation plan. You see that program, uh the plan has their mitigation plan force. On the uh the general staff and then transportation staff because both participate in the plan. Uh, then we have the Jackson County one point three million for highway thirty four project. Then we have two hundred eleven thousand for city of Mokota for East Maple, then hundred fifty nine thousand in STP funds for South Main Street, Summit Street, construction and intersection. One good thing with STBG is it's the RTA when it comes to your city, it's it's a STB swap. Needs the state money. So you took all the federal rates, but for example, Mokota, one advantage they got is they got federal money. So they are able to match this money to that. So the city is not paying much under the project. So we are able to do that. Uh, we need to tank I O D O T to let us use STB swap in. Uh, RTA cities. Then the STB, then the RCTP program is very successful for the past two years. We see the list of projects that have been accrued within the communities. Then we are doing a necessary plan for the region, which will be done by spring of twenty twenty five. We will offer a stronger application to submit to federal highway. So overall, this is just the projects that have been done in the region. Uh, what I'm requesting supervisors, is there anything that we focus that's missing on the list? And you want us to work on something and come back to you with some inputs, so.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, is time available?
Sit back here and heckle children.
So he's got a list here and uh projects and and things in the past and wondering about going forward. Um. The uh RCTCP program, we were reimbursing the past for that, correct?
Yeah, so the last two fiscal years, we did not reimburse because we over uh. We overused the money. It means that a couple of small cities got funded. He tuned that they are getting a thirty percent increase with the federal money, with the new transportation bill. When the Fed said, they said, all programs, I mean, the pro overall programs are getting thirty percent increase. What they did not specify is overall, there's a thirty percent increase. It means that there are a hundred percent increase for new programs. For old programs, they might be five to six percent increase. So when RKA program, we do that, we get a thirty percent increase and we funded uh at the time Luxembourg, New Vienna, Grand Mountain. Those three projects got funded and we gave money and then we gave the rest of the RCT money to the counties. When the new numbers came. We are short of money, but we already committed to those three projects because we're going to let him. So we are not able to fund the counties, but the county's thinking that they'll just pay themselves for uh two fifty years then back, so.
The lesson learned was not soon, right?
Made the federal rates.
Now, uh.
So the new buddy comes in and you're gonna backfill this.
Well, you.
You want me to? Hell, the money's there. Put that on the agenda for next meeting.
Sure, yeah, yeah. Uh, we'd be very happy to answer that. That's what.
That's only fair.
Seems to be. You offered a program then according to Jimmy Donovan. No, I think it's a good program for them smaller cities anyway, you know, I mean, obviously they need the systems too.
And the presentation wanted to use is the overall just the PCA program. We have homelessness programs, we have housing, we have brown field. I think Brownfield is pretty good. We got a brand new grant for three million. So we're getting more projects coming in. So that's one thing helping us a lot. Then you all know that we received a weatherization grant from part of that it wasn't on a contract with them. Once the contract is done, we will present to the supervisors or how the program will look.
Okay, so are there any questions for Shanda? Or project or concerns, I guess?
What it was the house supervisors, do you want us to do this? If it's a plant that you wanted to us all in a year?
Um, time, do you have a preference? I guess here's the thing. I mean, if there's something in particular that we need to start sort of look at or then we'll address a nice vote, right? Yeah, just an update, yeah.
So uh you'll be getting a memo from us for the RCTP program. You're just compiling the projects and the ranking processes going on. Uh, kind of get the memo and then.
Right.
And that's so that's the specific programs that comes to you and you'll be there to address if you have any questions. Uh, weatherization, the same thing. You're on the jet and Matt will talk to you. Uh, but in general, to view what EC has been the community is like what I did today. Some updates.
It's fine.
Uh. One.
Okay.
And.
I have a second question.
Okay.
Cities double up with a ten percent convention race and. Which is called problems is coming the shuttle between the start to get people out to one of the staging parts in the back. You were in sitting in RTA, a lot of times you're looking for ways to right increase ride. Is that something the RTA could look at or is that a possibility? To possibly help shuttle can.
Sure.
Out and back.
They find a contact maybe. Oh.
So if you can send an email, we can talk a little bit, but it's something. It would be twenty nine.
So the only thing is I don't want to promise anything until I drop the main again.
Okay.
Because they might be already committing the vehicles and drivers. That's why I will ask one of them to get in touch.
Okay. You don't want like two buses maybe? Uh, we're, we're still trying to get a, a handle on how many people are signing up, but we're, we're getting out for the portion. Parking's rather limited. So we thought if we could set up a shuttle system, whether we talked to one of the local businesses or things, one of their buses or I was like, you know, if RT is looking for rides. Um, I don't know how many. I, I don't know how many people are doing it right now. We're, you know, and our participants are signing up to speak, so.
Okay, so and uh. What are the launch destinations? They took something starting in there.
They started with Coca going out towards Iron, Iron Bridge on Iron Bridge Road. So probably. Ten mile round trip, roughly, I think, maybe a little more, but not close to ten, twenty miles round trip though.
Okay.
I don't have any equipment or anything like that, so we're just personal.
This will just to help people.
Okay. Okay, I will ask uh at the station here.
Okay.
So, thank you. Okay, the other discussion I want to have with the supervisors there is obviously, we're already at the RCT meeting, you've heard Bob Sinclair talking to you about the port authority and what the intentions are. Uh, overall, the intentions are good. The intentions are to lobby the city for the region. The only thing, what most of the communities are worried about is this is pretty much open ended. So what are we getting into? So how are we doing this in the long run? Who will be posting the meeting? And if it's volunteer, this is being taken seriously because once our cover made, people might drop off. So those are the questions that's been asked and Bob. Had had a bit hard time explaining that because he said he was volunteering that, but the question is how long? And uh so on and so forth. So uh what most of the counties are doing is they are sending documents to the legals to respond. I think Jackson County already did, they're not getting put. Uh, Scott is doing the same, Quentin is doing the same, they're giving the same board. So they want to see what the legals say. And if the legal, based on the legal's input, they want to address it. So.
Our kind of turn basically said it's too wide open financial obligations. I mean, he didn't recommend signing what they presented.
Yeah, because because concern what they had, let's see, you got a project, who's held responsible for the match?
Right.
So without the concern of the members, you're committing something and then you're held responsible to pay and it's not in the budget, that's a nightmare. So those are the kind of people should send their point is that we are not lobbying for projects, then what are you lobbying?
Well, so where's the. Well, for two years and then he said that they, they had a poor designation for a couple of years and he was able to get like a one or two million dollars. For the Army Corps of Engineers because of and the poor designation helped, but usually that comes with a match. And if our, our district says. You know, our non-elected officials that are appointed to the board say, yeah, we want to do this, but all of a sudden there's a county match for the seven counties. Like, you know, there's a, a match. Well, is it the town or does the board vote to this person between all the counties, you know?
Well, yeah, that's easy for.
You know, you know, let's say, let's say Burlington is in our thing and they, they want to do it. They apply, they get this and the port authority says, yes, we'll, we'll, we'll support it. And then all of a sudden, there's a five hundred thousand dollar match, local match, and that word says, oh, it's seven counties. That's, that's, you know, eighty thousand a piece. That's, that's easy. Then. Up here in Jackson County, uh that's, that's huge, especially when there's like.
And it has no benefit to us.
Exactly, you know, so that's, that's the only thing that's scary to me. I get it, poor designation, it's cool, but it's. What do you get for it? And it was kind of vanilla and the answers, you know?
So uh from county standpoint, are you for more information or is the information already enough to make addition?
I guess the information that was provided, I would not be comfortable doing that. Because of, again, where's the, where's the magic runs coming from?
I didn't see a benefit to Jackson County before.
Yeah. Just got pretty persistent about signing up.
Port Authority. You know, they'll be the one, you know, hey, I, it, it's just one of the things to me, it's just. There's too many questions. If you're signing the loan document, we'll figure out the financing later kind of thing, you know, that just, nobody will do that. It's the port authority. The entity that would go out and compete for funds or would it be up to individual entity like the city of Burlington, Scott County, or Jackson County? Who pursues the project? Is it the port authority or does the port authority just issue a letter saying we support it?
I think it's the uh the later, yeah, it's a company will go on their own for a project and the port authority supports it with that. The, my understanding, they don't have any financial obligation. Their project is more like a support, a significant.
Regional support.
Yeah, the only concern what members have is then how you find a project. For example, Downport is going, Continuity is going, Valley is going. If you stay in the past, we support all three. The question is which, what's your priority, you know? So which one becomes your priority? Uh, and and some of the concerns what we heard from small cities is well, the big ones have to pay for all the time and they will go. So one, one thing I said to Bob is you cannot have, you know, like a simple statement saying from this group, you need to have details, how this group works, or what is the financials of it? What are the realities of it? Like what's the, what they can do, what they cannot do, and what are the lobbying for an E C? Who are the lobbying? You cannot lobby for a federal money that's coming to the state and try to just take it to the group here. In that case, the duty will be there and the relationship with the duty is very important to all the communities, you know? The city core of engineers, you cannot do something to divert the uh funding to a point. That's fine for one time, but later on, the core of business might not take that area seriously. So those are the kind of things uh we ask them to flesh details. You cannot just keep it open ended.
We've got no logistics of where is this gonna be housed? Where are they gonna meet? Who, is there a full time donating their time? To kind of do the minutes and everything for this appointed non-compensated board? You know, there's all of those details that we're like, oh, you know, we'll figure that out. And just dump it in the officials' lap. I keep board supervisors part of it. No, and they're saying ask the non-alegitimate number, really?
So it's been hot.
Go on.
Open break through.
Open mouth, circle foot.
For the port authority agreement, they should explicitly state that the port authority has the financial obligation or require or responsibilities to many future projects. So basically pull the whole financial issue off the table back because really it's there just as a regional support group for the people that want to go out, solicit projects for their local area. Really, that's what it is, right?
Yeah, and it's, and the.
And it seemed like he kind of glossed over the one lady that used it, the doctor that was there that used it to help rehab a lot of the uh habitat along the. She did something like how many million dollars worth of stuff and he was like, oh, oh, yeah, I forgot. She did a lot of stuff too. And it was like financially wise, she had about ninety five percent of. What they were help, able to help get money for. She was responsible and utilized. And it was like, oh, yeah, she did stuff too. You know, and it was kind of really kind of downplaying what they could be selling.
And and the other problem what the cities have is, okay, that's fine. Uh, every city has their own grant writer. Some have in DC, some have in Des Moines. So if that's the case, we use our grant writers. So we are not going to use you. So what's the benefit for you in this? Because you're doing it for, and you're putting out your heart, that's great, but someday you'll be looking for some financial support. What's the financial support? So there are so many questions and uh. You're not getting answers. So we asked Bob for the details and if he's able to flush them, then we're going to get that.
Good. He said we could basically write any kind of letter, you know, what he sent the generic thing that we sent to uh John Keane. He was like, that's kind of what we're hoping for. But another county just like, yeah, we support this, but we will not, under any circumstances, operate any financial support, you know? You know, type of thing. So he goes, anything we do would be appreciated, but um they were hoping for kind of, because he said, like, unlike. Most of the other places, the state approves it and then the counties adopt it, the state approves or something, but I was different. It takes so many of the counties to say yes before it becomes automatic at the state. And.
And that's one problem. And we asked this question, and we're not going to create answers. So are you beating the county since city thickness the state?
Yeah.
Which I don't increase. Uh, well, he didn't answer that question because if they say, oh, this five counties and this big cities are approving it. And the duty says, well, we don't, then you're beating them one against other and we don't support that, you know? So, yeah, I'll work with him. I think he's presenting to the MP board this Thursday. Uh, and a couple of board members, RKA board members made it clear saying, this is a fifteen minute presentation. We don't need a full hour.
He wasn't afraid at all.
Yes, I know, I know. There's no loss of one. Right, so he said fifteen minutes at tops at the MP meeting. What he can do, then we'll decide. It's what the county says. Yeah, we will contact. Any other questions for me? Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Shanda.
Right.
Any other questions?
Yes, we can.
Thanks. Alright, see you, Shanda.
Alright. Anything else before the board this morning? Any reports? I see uh we got uh an email with uh a list of new laws and new bills and. Such, and there was quite a few. Some of them are rather interesting. One picked out that kind of a little low on the poller was uh now you can rent your ATV to a state park.
Hey.
So it's like, uh, it didn't make no sense that we couldn't put four of them down.
I guess we should throw out just to notice that there's a public hearing, May twentieth. At seven P M for the comprehensive plan. I was in the background, maybe we'd use up our time machine.
Yeah, uh, I got a district, uh, my district meeting or retreat, it was. Oh, where was it? It was three hours and forty minutes, so I didn't.
Oceola, right?
Oceola, I just. Got in on the website of updates and. Planning what might go on next year, so. Common stuff. I have motion in a second to adjourn, although the favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried.